Tonight, and I think we're still waiting for a few minutes. Bruce Charlene, but we can go ahead and get going just half a form. Dr. Peterson, are you, you want me to pass those out? We can get going.
This picture of the most.
Okay, Ryan Bierke, he's our council, bond council with Chapman and Cover. And he emailed me his lawyers, said, I'll be there at five. And I said, great. And he not here yet, which is unusual because they're usually on time. So there must be traffic issues. But I'll kind of tell you what I know that later on, if we have questions that I can't answer, he'll be, he'll be here. Okay. We're passing out in your board packet, you got a, you got a copy of the bylaws. And then there's a template of minutes. And you might be asking yourself, aren't the minutes after the fact? Yeah, they are. It's a template of minutes that's legal and Ryan will fill them out after we're done. Okay. Last month in our board meeting, we passed a resolution that allowed us to form a local building authority. Now, a local building authority allows a school district to issue revenue bonds. So for example, if we have a shortfall in funding when it comes to capital projects, which we do, if we choose, we can pay for, we can issue revenue bonds which are low interest and they have about a 21, 22 year maturity. You could spread the payments out over time and you can pay for them out of your capital funds at late payments. And so that's a, that'll be a tool that the board can use in the future when needed. Okay. But you can't use that tool unless you go through this process. And so last year, last month, we set up a situation, the, or the local building authority with resolutions. It was signed by everybody and all the legal documents were filed by our bond council. This year or this month, this year or this month, we organize. And we've kind of given you a quick guide. And this basically President Whitson will just lead us through this. Now, the other thing is this board, this, this local building authority meeting has to be separate. It's a separate entity. You are the school board for Weber School District, but you're also going to be the local building authority board. Hence, it's a separate meeting and it'll occur at the end of our regular board meeting. Here's Ryan. Welcome, Ryan. Again, I just said that if there's any questions that I can't answer, which are most of them, you would have, you would have the answers. I was just explaining through the process. And, and so we determined to have that, I said, this, this study session, or not study session, this board meeting that's in June, typically the primary purpose for this is the budget hearing. We have to have a budget passed by September, by June 21st. It's in statute. And so we're a June 14th, perfect timing. And at this meeting, just Kelly, so you know, since you're new, we don't have curriculum presentations, we don't have recognitions, those kinds of things. And so the meeting tends to go quicker because of those. So we said, and my budget presentation that I give will be about 15 minutes, then plus questions, maybe 20 minutes or so. I don't know if there'll be any questions, but if there are, we'll answer them. But the fact of the matter is it'll be a relatively short meeting compared to some of our meetings. We have this set to start at 6:45 or the way we wrote it, at the, or if this meeting goes longer after 6:45. So, and Ryan Bierke, Ryan helped me put together the verbiage. Now, if we for some reason finish at 6:20, you know what I mean, on my regular board meeting, we just had to kind of sit around and visit, we'll recess till 6:45 because we advertised it in the places that you advertised for 6:45. So we have to at least wait to 6:45. Does that make sense? And then if it goes after 6:45, we'll just start it when we can. Now, this quick guide that Ryan provided us, basically President Whitson will go down the list, you know, welcome, we're gonna start introductions. Then we'll have a motion to, if the normal order be waived, the following persons be elected to serve as officers. So Paul Whitson is our president, will also be president of the local building authority. John Ritchie is our vice president, who will also serve as vice president of local building authority. And yours truly will be elected secretary treasurer. Then we, there's adoption of the bylaws, we'll have a motion, which requires a second adoption of a seal. We have our own seal. For those of you don't know, the which district has its own seal. It's a, it's an old thing. I don't know how old that seal is, you know? It's had a long time. And whenever I have a document, it's an imprint, so you go, and it's in my desk. I've seen seals in districts and city counties that are giant. It's like, oh, come on, you know what I mean? Ours is not. And, but we get a seal and he brought the seal, I assume. Okay. The local building authority will have its own seal. Okay. And then the grant of authority, you make that motion. I move that the president and the vice president and secretary treasurer be authorized to execute on behalf of the authority and that'll be done. Then meetings, motion, I move the board trustees of the authority on regular meetings from time to time as the board trustees so deem necessary. On the same dates and at the same time and place as regular meetings in the Board of Education. So if we had to hold a meeting to act, it will be on the same day as a school board meeting, but it will be separate in the school board meeting. And then the ratification, there's a motion there, and then a move to adjourn. Okay. Now, Ryan's here. I've authorized him that if we miscue or something like that, he will call out from the audience and he'll say, you forgot to do this. And you'll say, thanks. And then we'll do it.
Let's just plan on that.
Okay. And, and so that's kind of what we're doing. And once again, the purpose of this is to set us up so we can issue revenue bonds as needed. And that we may need them because of the gargantuan increases in, in, in construction costs. Most school districts have been organizing these local building authorities to, for just this purpose. I would say it's been, it's quite calm, right? So we're not doing anything unusual or out of the ordinary. Okay. Any questions? Yeah.
But on, right, on one A, it says, meeting as the board of trustee. And then down later, later, meeting six A says, board of trustees. Who is the board of trustees?
You are.
The school board.
The school board, but you, because the local building authority is a completely different entity, you have a little bit of a different name. And in your bylaws, it sets up, the board acts as the board of trustees. If there's a change in the board, it automatically flows through. But we always hear it referred to as you're kind of changing your hat between the meetings.
So at the same women, so at the beginning, it should be meeting of the board of trustees.
With a plural.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's us.
That just has.
We met enemy and the enemy is us.
That's a good question, Doug. Any other questions? Yeah, Jen.
How long is this in place, this board? Is it in place for?
I can't hear you because of this fan.
How long is the board in place, the board of, the local building authority?
So the building authority is sort of perpetual duration to the extent that you need it. You don't really have to have too many meetings. If nothing's going on, just maybe once a year, you kind of look at the budget and make sure everything's okay.
What about the leadership? Does it stay the same as long as?
Yes, under the bylaws, it's always the members of the board of education are the members of the board of trustees. The president of the board of education is the president of the local building authority. So it just matches and it's set up to automatically work that way when you have a change in leadership, it automatically flows.
So when we have a change in the leadership, like I say, every two years in January when we reorganize, this will automatically flow to this.
Automatically flows through. You don't have to have a new election. It just says that the president of the local building authority is the president of the board of education.
Thank you.
And let's say, let's say 20, 30 years from now, you know, after Pam retires because she's going to be here a long time, this will still be in place?
It will still be in place as long as you do the things that you need to do. So this is set up as a nonprofit corporation and also a government entity. So you have to make annual filings with the state, renew your business license, and make sure that that stays current.
And one of those filings, you'll help us get, we'll set a schedule.
Instead of a schedule, it's, I think it's a yearly filing that you have to make.
Okay.
We filed the incorporation today. We should get notice, so it's about every year from there. Keep that.
Another question then on, on two A, we make a motion to elect Paul Whitson as the president. Shouldn't the motion be to elect the school board president as the president, knowing otherwise we have to, when the name changes?
So the reason why we've got it in these steps is as you start the meeting, you have no president because your bylaws are not yet in effect. And so we're saying, we're gonna get rid of the rules of order where you don't have, where you normally have your president in the meeting. And your first step is to elect a president to run the meeting. Your next step, you adopt the bylaws and those bylaws then put in place.
Got it.
All of these other pieces that say, on a going forward basis, here's how this works. So we just need those authorized personnel first so that we can have somebody who's signing and acting as president and as secretary for this meeting, and then the bylaws kind of take over it on a going forward basis.
Great. And these are all good questions. Any other questions? Okay. All right. That's all I have. President Whitson for this part of the study session. So I'll turn the time back to you. Thanks.
Thanks, Dr. Peterson. Let's see, let's go on to some department business. Nicole Livas, please.
President Whitson, Superintendent Butters and the school board. We just want to go over our negotiations. We've been able to settle those and they have been ratified. So you should have received a summary in your packet and I'm just gonna cover, just go over those real briefly. So we'll start with the certified negotiation summary. So it is agreed for our 2324 school year that the district will fully fund lane changes and step increases. Educators will also receive a 3% base increase and according to the, per the R277110 legislative increase, added to the salary $4,200. So educators will get that $4,200 added to the base and then a 3% increase. In our insurance, we had a switch where Laurie took over and conducted our insurance negotiations and did a wonderful job. And we were able to settle at a 4.9% increase, which is, is a, is a great number to be at. And the district will cover their cost of that increase. In our dental insurance, we were able to enhance that benefit by adding an implant benefit and increase orthodontics coverage. We also are going to switch our voluntary insurance. We've been currently with Washington National and Aflac. And we're going to use that with through our open enrollment system with GBS with Voya and that will cover illness, hospital and accidental. So all of that will be streamlined through our open enrollment in GBS. And then we just updated language changes under the negotiated educator contract. So we just had to update the language in the contract to align with our policies, procedures and our practices. So you can see where we adjusted those. That's quite long, so I won't go through all of those individually, but. And then we can also talk a little bit about the MOUs that we'll be covering. So there'll be a couple of them that will continue. Number one and number two MOU will continue. Those are things that we've been working on with professional learning days and aggressive student behavior. MOU number three is extra duty coverage. It was, so the MOU is formed in order to basically study a proposed idea. So the, like the extra duty coverage is we get a committee together, we get a committee formed by a certain date. And that committee studies that specific topic. And then that committee concludes at the end of the year and decides if that's something that we want to put into our negotiations and if we want to implement it or not. So that will add number three, extra duty coverage. And then MOU number four is a continuation. So we've been looking at our evaluation tool and our procedures for teachers and we're going to continue that MOU as well. We want to have a little bit more time to get more feedback and be able to adjust that as needed before we put that into our negotiated contract. We also are going to look at MOU number five, which is a personal leave allowance, which will actually affect each group, so certified, classified and administrative groups. So we're going to put an MOU together to look at a possible flex option with leave where it will allow an employee to use their, their sick leave to flex it as a vacation day or a personal leave day. I just want to create some word, look at what that option would do for our employees. And then MOU number six has been phased out. The catastrophic leave bank will be phased out as of September 30th. So we will no longer need that one. And then we also will have an MOU for parent teacher conferences. There was a desire to see if there is a better or more effective way to run our parent teacher conferences. Those are the MOUs for certified staff. Any questions on that one? Yeah.
Some of our new board members might not know what MOU stands.
Memorandum of Understanding. Okay. So then we'll move into the classified and administrative negotiated agreement summaries. And there's a lot of similarities on, on these two, so I'll try to go together on these. So in both of these agreements, it was agreed that we will have full lane change, that lane changes, step increases will be fully funded as well, they'll have a 6% base increase. And that was a way for, to balance what certified employees are receiving to make sure that we, we've done a great job in Weber School District to make sure that all of our employees receive an increase that's equitable. And so that's how we will make that more equitable is a 6% increase, again, the 4.9% insurance. And then we also are going to change our open enrollment timeframe with the insurance from August 1st to August 15th. And then that would also, so we will be changing our plan years and that adjustment will come this fall, as you can see the dates here in the packet. Our deductibles, we did have to increase the deductibles a little bit to keep that percent increase with insurance to 4.9%. So there is a slight increase there on, on the deductibles. And then we also again updated the language in the agreement to align with our practices and our policies. And then if you go down to the MOUs on the classified staff, just real quickly on those, we have completed MOU number one, which is adding an assistant custodian to all elementary schools and MOU number three, those are, we're not going to add to those this year with, right now with the constrictions of, of funding. And then the next one would be number four and number five. So number four, we did the fleet technicians. We did add to those because the need for our buses with the increase of the new cone and the new schools, we did need to add a couple of new positions for those technicians to maintain our buses. MOU number five is the evaluation changes. We moved to the new platform, so we've completed that one. And then MOU number two, we want to take a look at paraprofessionals and how the positions and training and site, salary, site and schedule. We just want to take a better, deeper look at how we're supporting our paraprofessionals and if there's a better way that we can help retain, to recruit and retain paraprofessionals. That is one of the areas that we're really struggling to fulfill those positions and, and retain them. So we wanted to get a committee together, went through that MOU and figure out how we can do a better job of that. And then we have our MOU flex leave, as I talked about in the previous, the previous And then on the WAT administration, so the administrator agreement summary, same thing with the insurance and salary increase, the base increase. Again, just updated the language to align with our, our practices, policies and agreement. And then the MOU that we're going to implement through the WAT is to take a look at the salary schedule. It hasn't been looked at for a very long time and we just want to make sure that we're looking at comparable districts and surrounding districts to make sure that we're staying competitive. Any questions on any of those? Okay. All right. Thank you.
And thanks to everybody for doing that, Laurie and Nicole and everybody that was involved. And that's a lot of work. I know people, you know, want to pull hair out and scream and yell and we appreciate all their hard work.
President, we have, as you know, I've been, one way to get close, or I've got to get close like this, right? As you may know, I've been the chair of the insurance committee for a number of years and Laurie can run circles around me and she's doing a really good job.
It's because you've come on here to just talk without raising your hand, Robert. No, I sit on the interns committee. So they did a really great job of, there was a lot of concerns about the new select health, the negotiated contract. So they went forward and had, we did it out to all different interns. So they were really thorough and I think most everybody was pleased with the changes, but you know, it wasn't unanimous, but you can't please everybody.
If we can get more, that's good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Wonderful. Secondary education, Matt Williams, please.
Board of Education, President Whitson and Superintendent Butters. I've just been asked to give you a kind of a snapshot of where things are with boys volleyball and the sanctioning process that we've gone through with, with boys volleyball. In March of 2022, the UHSAA, which is the Utah High School Athletic Association, board of trustees adopted and approved adding boys volleyball to the spring schedule of 2324. So that was done back in 2022. It was left up to individual districts and schools to determine whether or not they wanted to sanction it and adopt boys volleyball. Initially, there was some pushback amongst Weber School District employees, not because of boys volleyball, because everybody saw that as a great addition, but because it was in the spring sports. Right now, there's nine spring sports. In addition to boys volleyball, it'll be 10 next spring. So, which you can imagine the nightmare or the circus that goes on in the spring. So any of the pushback that we received was based on that, coverage, athletic trainers, different things, transportation, all that kind of stuff. So as we started to look into it, we, we did a survey. So in March of just this last March, we sent out a survey to all 10th, 11th and 12th grade boys for next year and their interest in boys volleyball. We received, we sent out 4,300 emails to, to 4,300 boys. We received 212 responses. And here's, here's kind of how it, we gauged on it to see what our participation rate would be. Weber High School, there were 60 people from Weber High School that responded. Forty-seven said that they would try out. Thirteen said that they were not interested. Roy High School, there were 58 that responded. Forty-five said they would try out. Thirteen said they would not. Fremont High School, 55 responded. Forty-four said they would try out and 11 said they would not. And then Bonneville had the smallest numbers. They had 36 that responded. Twenty-nine said they would try out and seven were not interested. So what that told us, as we met with the ADs, of whether or not we had enough to fill a team of six varsities and start with varsity. So it was determined that we, we had enough interest at each of the high schools to do so. So currently, there is an opening for a boys head volleyball coach at each of the schools. A few have already hired. One's been hired and one quit already. And so that will be opened again, but there is quite a bit of interest and positive interest for us to have boys volleyball. I need to let you know that Mrs. Heidi Leith Hall out in the Weber area has a very strong program with club volleyball going on right now. They have three teams, at times four teams, participating in a club volleyball league that went on the spring and they did very, very well. She's been an advocate for boys volleyball across the state and has helped us tremendously in, in doing, getting it sanctioned. So I ran some numbers just so you have an idea of what it would cost to start up a program at each of the high schools in equipment costs. And this is jerseys, balls, ball bags, everything would cost about $3,500 to start up boys volleyball. As you know, we have girls volleyball, we would have to buy new nets, standards, those kinds of things. Head coach and two assistants is an additional $6,000. So it would be right around $10,000 for each high school to start this up. So Weber District's cost, not including transportation, would be about $40,000 total cost. So that's kind of where we are right now. We have lots of support for it. We're looking at implementing it with your approval. And any questions about that?
Is it, is it, was 40-ish young men interested in playing at each high school trying out? It's still just going to be varsity level or will that work down a little bit?
Yeah, so depending on the interest, they'll start with varsity. And then if there's, if they have 40 kids show up, they could implement a JV and possible soph- sophomore schedule. But right now, UHSAA is just implementing varsity and JV to start there for the 2324 school year. Yeah.
Is this, what about the Title IX considerations? Are we okay with that?
UHSAA has felt like it helps even out the plane of Title IX and that, that all requirements are made with that, with that. So, yeah, good question, Jen.
So Matt, will the same sanctions occur if we don't count the JV team? I mean, I know in the past, some of our teams, if they can't field the JV team, they...
That's a good question. No. So regions haven't even been specified yet because they're still waiting for people to sanction whether or not individual schools will. I called down to the state to ask when we would find that out and they said, as the year goes and as we get the interest of... They'll put a date of when they need all that information and then they'll set the regions based on that. And it'll just, there won't be any sanctioning if you don't have a JV team like happens in football. You are fined sometimes for not having a sub varsity team. So no, that wouldn't be in place.
Okay, thank you. So like if, if Bonneville didn't have enough, you know, interest with kid, like to field a full team, would kids there be able to go to one of our other high schools to play or how would that work or are they just?
Great question. I, I called and asked that just for that purpose exactly. And they said they would not be allowed to go to other schools to participate, which is different than what they did with lacrosse. For the first couple of years of lacrosse, they allowed just that, Bonneville kids to come to Roy to play or to Fremont. So they said that that would not be allowed, but they thought they'd have enough participation to avoid that.
So then I guess it's up to the individual school to just try and, try and get more people to want to play.
Yeah, so Mrs. Leith Hall, when she, she put together lots of reports for us and she opened it up to everybody in Weber County, really. And so she had participants from every school. The largest, of course, was Weber High and then Fremont had big numbers. And then Roy had the smallest numbers and Bonneville had decent numbers of kids that already were participating right now. So. Any other questions?
Matt, great, great information. Can I just add one thing for, you'll remember Heidi, those of you that were on the board, came and addressed the board and asked the district to support their ability as a club sport at that time to utilize some of our facilities. And we've been allowing that over the last little while, especially this last year. I, I really feel like the club scene is really where we're going to draw from. It's just like soccer and lacrosse and I think we're going to have participation in our schools. I'm very hopeful. So to avoid what you're talking about, Kelly.
Yeah, we, we met with a couple of our junior high principals and they allowed Heidi's team to come in and practice a couple... team to come in and practice a couple nights a week at O'Ryan and North Ogden Junior High, I believe, so that they could have, utilize our equipment and all that.
Very good. Thanks, Matt. We were just talking about pickleball and where, what's going to happen with pickleball now?
It's a spring.
Thanks, Matt. Superintendent, return.
Yes, great, board. Let me just update you, if you wouldn't mind here, on just three items, and then we can take a little break before the budget hearing begins. There's a big ticket item on your work, if you noticed on the consent calendar, related to audio enhancement. Let me, if I could, let me just take a couple of minutes and talk about the federal monies that we received during COVID. We have a particular grant. It's called ESTER II that is set to expire. Our deadline for utilizing those funds is, is set to expire in September of 2023. So it's looming. As you know, one of our major priorities as a board and as a district is safety, student safety. And so we've been really trying to carve out this one-time money, alter the grant language a little bit for ESTER II and ESTER III funding that we still have to, have a little bit of time to spend, to try to pivot a little bit and make sure that we're adding some safety features to some of our schools. Because the deadline's looming, we chose three elementary schools to apply around $300,000 each to, you'll notice the total cost of the consent information. We picked Bates, we picked Lowman View, and we picked Juana. And the reason we chose those three schools is because those three, three schools have already invested certain amount of their own funding into the audio enhancement system. We talked to audio enhancement. They indicated that they would credit back those schools, that what they've already invested, and apply it to this overall cost. But what we're, what we're going to be able to do in these three schools, and I'll list some of the other schools that we've added audio enhancement to, what we're going to be able to do is ensure that every teacher has an audio enhanced learning setting where every child, no matter where they're seated in the classroom, is going to be able to hear and be highly engaged in what's going on instructionally. We also have the ability for every teacher in the school to have a little land here that they wear that they can signal an emergency. It will trigger an emergency through an integrated intercom system. It will allow us to respond more quickly to issues that might happen in our schools. And those, those intercom systems and this audio enhancement system also allows us to program some things throughout the school around bells, around notifications if we did have to, you know, have an intruder into the building or anything like that. It just enables us to fortify our buildings. Many of you might be thinking, why, why these three schools, two of them are in the Weber Cone. We have big plans to spread the wealth a little bit in terms of using ESTER III. Let me give you an idea. Right now, we've added an entire integrated AE system to Weaver High School this past year. Weaver High School entered this past year without the ability to communicate schoolwide through an integrated intercom system. It's been a, just a heaven sent situation for Weaver High School. We've, we've really increased the safety standard at Weaver High School. Roy Junior High School has a full system. Walquist Junior High has most of the system. We need to add the Safe Alert to Walquist. North Ogden Elementary has the entire system. North Park needs the Safe Alert, functionality that has most of the system. Orchard Springs, Silver Ridge, West Weber are all AE fortified. And what we're planning to do is to, to take a look at ESTER III and carve out a little bit more money and spread this process throughout our cones to make sure that we are equitable. So on the list coming up would obviously be our, our three new schools, our three new buildings will have audio enhancement. But we're also looking at adding it at Sandridge, Hooper Elementary, and perhaps Bonneville. We'll need to talk a little bit about Bonneville High School. But that way, we're making sure that we're, we're fortifying schools in all four of our cones to this point. Okay? So I just wanted to give you that overview. This, this is one-time money. So there's no better usage of it, in our opinion, than to fortify and use it for capital, the safety features, like we're, we're trying to do. If you have questions, we're, I'm open to those.
My question was just last month on the consent calendar. Sherry Hyder had a memo about using, I think it was like 900 of the ESTER, was it ESTER II? So how is this, is this separate?
It's the same. We just, it's the same. I just wanted to make sure we really flushed it out so you understood which schools were going to be impacted.
So will that, will that take us down to, I mean, will we have used all of our available?
That ESTER II, we will pretty much have eaten up the balance of ESTER II. But Jan, we have a very healthy balance in ESTER III, which we have an entire, another calendar year to utilize, and, and we'll make sure that we carve out some of that money for this purpose. Right, right. That's the goal. Any questions about that? Okay. Just a couple of other quick things. Board, if tonight on a second reading, you choose to approve the board meeting policy, which, which relates to the public comment piece of our meetings moving into the new calendar board meeting year, meeting year, we will, I just wanted to assure you that during the month of July, we will make sure that we pivot really quickly and get the instructions to our public, to our taxpayers, and to our patrons about how they can sign up for public comment for meetings. We, as you know, we're going to try to prioritize signup online so that we can manage it a little bit easier. We'll also have an opportunity for patrons to sign up at the door. But we will lay out those, that narrative and those specifications online, and I'll make sure to alert you, and we'll send out an alert to our public so that they know what that process looks like. Okay? Any questions about that, Jan?
Thank you, too, to Pam for having the agenda out, because I know that was a question last time. There's, you know, how soon we know what we got, and so the agenda was going to be, that was timely.
Yep.
It was that and they...
Yep. They'll want to take a look at that. Absolutely. Any other thoughts or questions there? Okay. And then last but not least, I just wanted to remind the board that we do have a special board study session in two days, this Friday. We'll start at eight o'clock. Come hungry. We'll, we'll feed you beforehand. And we've got some items to discuss moving into the new school year. So I just wanted to remind you about that. That's all I have, President.
I think you all have the agenda for that meeting. I, I email it to you.
That's well.
Wonderful.
That's it?
Well, we've got a few minutes. Anything else, board? Let's, let's go ahead, and we'll adjourn this until we begin our regular board meeting at six o'clock.